All right. Catholic Community Schools in partnership with its parents, students, and the community is committed to educate students to become skills, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in our global society. Notice of the meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice of the meeting to the public. Notice of the meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been preceded by a vast notice. There to be an open session. Copy the Open Meeting Act is posted in the front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
We tried to spend out as many bills as we could this month to make sure that we're not carrying things into the next fiscal year. However, we're going to need a second meeting this month. And I'm gonna need a quorum just to make the final transfers and to pay final bills and get it off of next year's budget. Okay, and so I don't know if this is a good time for you, but later in the meeting we will look at a date that works after the 20th. Because then I'll be able to finalize your, not only your budget for next year, but also your tax request. Because I'll get new valuations after the 20th. So.
And be able to do those both at the same time.
Yeah, because it'll be a quick meeting and then we'll just talk through the budget. And then it gets in the paper the next week. It advertises. So I want you guys to know it's on that budget, so.
We can set a meeting.
So we don't have to set the meeting date now, but we can do it later in the meeting just so you know. Okay?
Okay, call the roll.
Um, Robits.
Yes.
Vanuza.
Yes.
Mieszek.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Simrad.
Yes.
Babarchek.
Yes.
All right. Public forum. Anybody with presentations? We need to just keep presentations to five minutes in length. And I know we have representatives from CHI. If you would like the floor.
I have very little to say except for we are here to present the check to the school for, from the Behavioral Health Coalition. This is a check for $12,340. It is for the Capturing Kids' Hearts, and I'm forgetting the second one. Building healthy relationships programs. So this is part of a grant initiative through CHI Health. And our Behavioral Health Coalition did a phenomenal job. Thank you to the faculty that was on a coalition. It was one of the strongest coalitions within CHI Health. It's our opportunity to give back. These are great programs that we're passionate about continuing to support our community. So that's why we're here tonight. So thank you for your partnership.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Those are things you don't anticipate.
Somebody with their phone, take a picture that we can put in the paper and get me a couple of board members or the board members stand with them. You two.
However you want.
We need a picture of this.
Absolutely.
So does somebody want to take a picture? You can take it with my phone. Okay, you two, let's go like someplace.
Do you want all the board members or just some?
Let's go here. This would be a good background. And we'll take your picture because we want you two in it. And board members. This will be good. Is this the check?
Yeah.
Okay, stop, stop. Don't take it yet. Because I want to have a picture of you giving it to one of the board members. And then here you can hold this check. So whoever wants to give the check and whoever wants to receive it, just so they see.
Treasurer.
All right, one, two, three. We're going to go with two cameras. Thank you. Who went first? Just to make sure we get the best one.
You guys look gorgeous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll also send you.
I'll take that check. All right, hey, Rich?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, just so the board understands. Behavioral Health Coalition really works with us and our families on behavioral health, behavioral mental health. The Capturing Kids' Hearts program, this is probably best understood this way. There's three ways to improve a school, and really only three. The first way is have a strong curriculum. So they liken it to a carpenter's belt. And on one hip you have curriculum, you got stuff, you have facilities, you have your assessment, all those things that you would put over here that help guide what you want kids to be able to do. And the second side of the belt is really how. And so it's teacher pedagogy, it's better teachers in classrooms, it's the workshops that we do to help our teachers get better, our coaches get better. Right? But there's a third part of that belt that we don't spend a lot of time with, or at least we don't talk a lot about. And it's that part of building a kit. Okay, how do you help improve self-esteem? How do you promote work ethic? And Capturing Kids' Hearts really works with how do you build that student? How do you build your staff? And how do you make your staff emotionally, socially better? Okay? And what that check does is it allows us to be affordable, to be able to get that third leg of, of professional development in that really helps us put the three together. So it doesn't matter. So one thing is the what and the who, and this is the way. And that's what Capturing Kids' Hearts does is teaches us ways to work with our kids and our families and how do we build that. And you can see from Scott Frost came back to Nebraska. And it's so simple that we understand that he had to, he had to create a different culture down there for being successful. Okay, so if it's important in football, imagine how important it can be here, especially for those that don't have the support at home. Or may not feel like they can find some success or some level of success in their school. And so change in the culture of a school will produce results. It will. We know that. John Cook, who coaches a volleyball team, talks a lot about the culture that he creates with his girls. And he said, as far as coaching, I coached two points. That's all. We lose our, the majority of our matches by two and we win a lot of our matches by two. So he said, as far as the stuff, I coached two points. But it's the culture that allows me to do it. So in our schools, it's important that we understand that we have the other pieces in place. Okay, we're a great school that way. I would, I'd venture to say that the curriculum and the coordination of that side is stronger in this school, probably than any other school I've been in. The teaching and pedagogy is getting stronger. Some of it we've trained and some of it we've hired. And it's, it's that other thing about how do you take the culture and build that to where it's strong. So it's extremely important that we have this partnership with you two. You don't understand how important it is to us and the impact that you can make by the support that you give us to be able to, to do these things. So thank you. I think it's important that the board understands the impact that you guys make through your contributions. So thank you.
So specifically that those dollars will be used for primarily staff, staff development then?
Well, it's two, two programs. One's behavioral mental health and the other one is, or behavioral health because it's more than just mental. And then the Capturing Kids' Hearts that we just, our high school staff was just put through that training and all new teachers. So every one of our people that we put in front of the classroom has been trained in those. Our new staff will, will get APL. They've gone through the basics of Marzano and so, and they all have a strong. Okay?
And the other piece is the Building Healthy Relationships. That is a program that is provided for survivors. And they have lost grant funding for that program. It's a program that teaches kids of what a healthy relationship looks like. And unfortunately, many of our students don't know what that looks like because they don't have that opportunity at home or within the relationship. So the Building Healthy Relationships program is in middle school and high school. It's a volunteer program that children sign up for to learn what a healthy relationship looks like. How they can identify and help others identify what that looks like and self-refer to get the help they need when they're in a unhealthy relationship.
So the coordinated process in school says we have our time at the middle school where that teacher focuses on a relationship with the child. And we've got at the high school, the focus program that helps us be able to direct kids into those programs. So, so you know, you've got the pieces in place. It's just if we can make sure it works for all kids. So thank you.
Yes, thank you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay. All right.
Are they supposed to leave that big check? We have the little check.
The one that counts.
That's the, that's the more important one.
Title IX Coordinator. Someone want to make that motion?
Make the motion to approve the superintendent as a 2019-20 Title IX Coordinator. And District Representative for all local, state, and federal programs.
Does there a second? I'll second that motion. Okay, discussion?
Something that's important because we get, we get audited all, all the time. And this is one of the things that they look for every time is who's appointed, who? Because the parents who need a Title IX report or want to report something, they have to know and it's got to be approved by the board, so.
Sally, call the roll.
Vanuza?
Yes.
Mieszek?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simrad?
Yes.
Babarchek?
Yes.
Robits?
Yes.
And I did successfully complete my training.
All right. Policy. I move to approve the final reading of the 2019-20 New and Amended Board Policies as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion.
These are all up on the website now, pending second approval or final reading. And we may have a couple more policies coming at us quick, but I've not heard anything from the policy people yet. So we'll live with what we have.
Yeah. Sally, call the roll.
Mieszek?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simrad?
Yes.
Babarchek?
Yes.
Robits?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a correction. One of them pulled out this afternoon, so we'll read it on the board.
So we just have one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Someone want to make that?
Well.
I'll move to the administrative new hire recommendation of Ariana Alakon. Second to motion. Discussion.
We did have two. The other one was a parent educator out of Fisher's and she has since pulled her application. And so we still have a couple of positions to fill here moving forward. But the principals have been fairly patient to see how the students shake out. So we won't overhire, but we're going to open some positions again for support staff. All of our teaching positions are filled. These are, these are support positions.
So Ariana was already employed by the school at the office.
This is the second Ariana Alakon. So now we have two.
Oh, okay.
Really?
I was saying that it was the friend.
And we also have another employee that, of the same names, so.
There's three now, huh?
Well, so not of the same name, but there's two of this name and two of this name.
We have several Marias.
I didn't think that we had to do, approve a new hire if it was, if it was a different position.
It's a different person, same name. If there's a second Dave Gibbons, don't hire him. I'm just.
Call the roll, Sally.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simrad?
Yes.
Babarchek?
Yes.
Robits?
Yes.
Vanuza?
Yes.
Mieszek?
Yes.
All right, superintendent's report.
I had worked it out with the principal since tomorrow's their first day with staff and Wednesday is their first day with students. I had, I didn't need, of course, this month, there really wouldn't be a lot. But depends on if you want a board report. They can do board reports in the later meeting in August if you want them, or they'll just wait till September. What do you want as a board? Okay, so September's fine. No board reports till, till the next year. NASB membership meeting, I did post that there. That's always a good workshop. It's in Norfolk. Is it the 25th, I think. But read, read through, here's your area membership meeting. There's a flyer in there. Make sure you let Sally know. She'll register you. Okay? So if you're interested in going to that.
Which one are we looking at going to?
Norfolk. That's the one that's for this area. But if you, if you want to go to Fremont, but they'll send all of your, that's where they do the board awards and those things. But if you go to another one, as Sally registers you, they'll, they'll know you went there. So if, if you have a different night that works, just look through there and say, I would like to go to Fremont, or I'd like to go to Norfolk, or I'd like. So if you have a, if another night works for you to go to another area of membership meeting, you can go someplace else. Second thing is the census report. And I had Sally put last year's and this year's so you can compare the two. Okay, for numbers. And.
Looks fairly consistent across that 150 mark.
District All Staff Opening Meeting is tomorrow morning. You're sure welcome to come. It's kind of a neat meeting. We have, we've got a good speaker tomorrow morning. From, he was, he's taught in Broward County, Florida. He's worked a lot with immigrant students. And he himself is an immigrant. And so he will, he will do an awesome job of presenting tomorrow morning.
What time?
We have our opening meeting starting at eight. It'll be done by 10:00. So. And.
He's slated to speak at 9:00 AM if that's.
Yeah, he'll speak at nine, but the opening sessions start today. So that's usually when at least one member of the board welcomes the staff back. So if the whole board's here, that would be awesome. But I know.
Yep.
Other jobs in conflict?
We're not, is that the meeting we've grilled burgers for in the past or nor not?
We have, but we haven't done that. One of the things that happened is our staff goes out to eat. And so we were having more burgers than staff. And just getting, getting our board members here. So we have another time in the year that we can do that. And so we'll see about.
Somebody wants to grill, it looks like.
Oh, I know.
Speechless.
I wasn't volunteering. I just remembered.
There's just so much going on that first day. Let's staff go back to the classroom and so on, so.
Food. It was all about food.
I bet a few burgers that disappeared that didn't quite make it to the serving line.
Okay, so a special board meeting. I'm going to jump over the preliminary budget review because I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that either. But it's more important that I get a date set for that meeting.
Is Monday the 26th? Would that work for people? Is Monday a good day or is that a better day or worse day than?
Looks for me.
Sure, I guess.
You know, I know you won't be here yet. Said that. We do have to have a quorum. So that's why I want to make sure we got.
And the time of the meeting doesn't matter to me. If you want to go earlier, if you want to do, I mean, you guys.
That's, that's good. 26th.
6:30?
That works.
Okay, Sally, 6:30 on the 26th. I know Chuck has a conflict and so he won't be here. So we're going to need to make sure we get the other people.
So do I, but I don't vote. Shelley will, if you want.
Okay, and then I just want to talk through the preliminary budget quick. And I put a preliminary budget in front of you. If you look at the sheet that has the black, the black spaces, you guys want to copy this? So you got something like that?
No, it's just one. This one was last month. But we can share.
Oh, sorry. It should have a front and back.
It'll have to be posted before.
Okay, did I, did I give you guys?
The Wednesday before. So yeah, we probably will do.
Okay.
And we probably have to post.
So if you, you look at the one that says notice of budget hearing and budget summary. You'll see all the funds that we have from the general fund depreciation, employee benefit, and so on, all the way down. Okay? And you'll see the totals. The first column is the actuals, which is what did you actually spend, not did, what would you budget, but what did you actually spend? The first column will be lower than the other two because the other two are budgeted columns. Okay? And so column two is the budget from last year. Column three is the proposed budget for next year. So if you look at the general fund for next year, you'll see it's the same budget as this year. We went in and amended the budget this year so, so we could, we would have enough room to prepay the, some things from 2019-20 and keep our budget tighter for, for next school year or 1819, keep it tighter for next year. The second one is the depreciation fund, which is what we'll be transferring some money into. That is for large ticket purchases. It's for repairs, it's for carpet replacement. We, we put our bus transfers in there. We buy our vehicles out of there, copy machines, those large ticket items come out of depreciation fund. The depreciation fund has no taxing ability. It has to get its money from the general fund. Okay, so we, and the only way it can get its money is if we transfer some money into it. Okay? The next one is the Employee Benefit Fund. Just like what, just what it says, it's the place that we monthly pay benefits out of and then reimburse that fund each month. Okay, and so that budget has worked. You see, we spent $88,000 two years ago and we've got a budget of $145,000 that works. The Activities Fund, we're doing more in the Activities Fund. Our programs are getting bigger. We're going to spend close to our budget this year, $500,000. We put an extra $100,000 on that budget. But you can't spend it if you don't have it. Okay, so that's a budget that you got to generate your money in there if you want to spend it. School Nutrition is the same way. We've got a huge balance in our School Nutrition Fund. And I'm, my concern will be in this year because we can't just take the money and throw it in a different program. But they told us a year ago that we needed to raise our lunch prices. Our lunch price was too low. So when we asked them how much we had to raise it this year, if you remember, they said a nickel. I'm thinking, okay, so for a nickel, you're going to make me raise the price. So lunch prices are a nickel higher. But remember that we're 30-some percent of our kids are the only ones that pay anything for lunch. And that we have a high free and reduced lunch population. It is rare that the reimbursement for school lunch can keep a school lunch program afloat. But what makes it work for us is the number of participants that we have every day in our program from breakfast to lunch. And that's the only thing I can figure out because our lunch, we, we had an outside company come in and audit our lunch program. And we looked at cost per meal. We looked at labor per meal. And we were right on the average. And so it's got to be our participation rate that's helping us. Because I was concerned, are we high in one area, low in one area? Because how do you know if you're paying fair? And how do you know? But that outside audit from OPA came in and compared our labor costs per meal and our food costs per meal. And we were right on that average for a state in Nebraska, so. The Bond Fund. You'll see that we raised the bond fund a little bit. Well.
A million dollars.
About a million dollars because we took it out of the, out of the building fund, what we would be taxing in the building fund. But all of the receipts from the sale of the bonds have gone into the building fund. So you'll see $13 million in there. And so that $13 million, you have to put in your budget. Whether we'll spend it all, it just depends on how the timeline for the building construction works out. But that, that has the bond proceeds in. And so we had to match our, Nebraska has a requirement, I wish the federal government did, but Nebraska has a requirement that your budget must balance. So your cash and your, and your expenditures have to match. So if you have $13 million cash, you got to match it. And vice versa, if you, if you don't have as much money, you can't inflate your budget and go in debt. Okay, so, which is a good thing. It's a cash-based budget. Qualified Capital Purpose. Each year we, this is a balloon payment bond in the end, each year as we collect money. So we have more money in there than we had last year. So the budget has to reflect the increase in cash. Very simple. So we, we have been taxing $500,000 a year. And so that's how much money we have in that fund. The Cooperative Fund, this is the program that we, that we run. Anything that we have a cooperative venture. So if we work with the city or the county, we have an attendance interventionist that, that the county pays for. So her salary comes out of here. Okay, and so any program that we have that is a cooperative venture with any other public entity, that's what comes out of that co-op fund. Okay? Okay, and then the last one is the Student Fee Fund. So again, we just have to match our numbers. So our freshmen that come in pay, pay something for protection on their iPads. I guess a one-time thing. And the same thing with our staff. They can buy protection for their, for their equipment. They've got a projector. They've got a laptop. They've got an iPad. So they can pay a $40 one time into that fund. And that's the fund that we use to repair equipment throughout the year. So taxpayers aren't hung with that. The taxpayers buy it. But it, but the repairs come out of that fund. So. On the backside of that. You'll see all those funds again. These are only the ones that have a taxing authority. So up on the top, you'll see that I put the same valuation in for 1920 as I had for 1819 because I don't have new valuations. So it says 0% change. This sheet expanded from last year. There's a few more columns on here. So you'll see that we had an operating budget last year and an operating budget for 1920. See those? You'll see how much we asked for taxes last year. And you'll see that in the bond fund, we just doubled that. We kept the same in the qualified capital. There's no taxing in the, in the building fund. Last year, our total tax was $1.12. Right now, it's taxed at $1.12. We promised them in the bond that we would keep the tax asking where it is. We're fortunate. We've got some state aid increase. And so as of right now, that valuation or the levy stays the same. Our tax asking stays the same.
Everything valuations are going to be pretty flat?
Yeah, I think they'll be flat, but could be up a little bit, could be down a little bit. And that's why in your next meeting, once I get those valuations and I plug those things in, there may be some things I can tweak in here a little bit to try to keep that levy pretty constant, but.
I think your city stuff might go up a little bit.
City might go up and ag may, may drop a little bit. I don't know, you know? I don't see huge shifts. That's not going to happen. So between now and that meeting, when I get the valuations, I can send the entire budget, which is a lot of. So between now and that meeting, when I get the valuations, I can send the entire budget, which is a lot of pages. Or would you rather have easy? That's what you pay me to do, that's, okay. I can send this out to you ahead of time, and then after that meeting, then you guys will say, put it in the paper, okay?
I guess unless there's something crazy silly that happens, you know, I think.
I, I will have more, more paper for you at the meeting, but. Virginia, if you also noticed that every year before you had to sign that thing, so you were liable?
Yeah.
Your, your name is not on anymore.
Interesting.
I know.
She's off the hook.
Seal her name.
Okay, so, look, look through that, I am, I am perfectly willing to sit down with any single board member, go through the budget line by line, show you how it works. I'm also okay with. You know, if you've been through this thing enough, you say, okay, I get it.
So yeah, only, so the bond fund doubling, so. Why does that occur?
Because in the past we put half of it in the building fund, half in the bond fund.
Okay.
Now with that, now it's all going to bond fund. Okay?
Do something simple.
And can you explain under that special building fund, under our operating budget, it's showing thirteen million five hundred thousand? So. Help me understand that, why, you know, it's been, it was half a million the year before, now it's thirteen million?
You passed a twelve and a half million dollar bond, and all the proceeds from that bond went into that fund. They don't go into the bond fund, they go into the building fund. Because the bond fund is solely for the collection of money to pay off bonds. The building fund is solely for building new construction, okay? So when you sell your bonds, that money has to go somewhere. And so what we did was we, they resold, or they sold the twelve and a half million, but they also resold the two thousand twelve bonds and saved us a quarter million dollars.
Right.
Okay, so all them, all those proceeds went into that fund. Makes sense? I shouldn't say all of them, because the proceeds that were on the new bonds that were sold paid off the two thousand twelve bonds. Okay, that's how that, so that's why you don't see eighteen million in there. Okay? So now, one of the things that you can do is this, your qualified capital purpose undertaking fund, the addition to the elementary. If you tax next year for the last time on that, you still have some money, but you're gonna earn some interest on that. That may be your last year that you choose to, to fund that. Okay, because you've got five more years of interest, and we'll kind of calculate that out to see if we can let that five cents go away. Okay, so we'll, we'll decide that, you'll decide that down the road, how you want to manage that fund. But you're gonna have to have four point five million in that fund to pay off the bonds. And right now you have some money in there, because the way it works is we have to pay the annual interest on those bonds. But we don't pay any premium or any, any principal. So we pay the interest, and then the federal government reimburses us that money. And when you first started, you got a hundred percent, now you're in the high nineties, this doesn't quite pay the whole thing, there's some things that have happened at the federal level. Where, but it's still, you're, you're getting almost free, free money, that's why it's crazy to pay it back. Because you can earn more interest than you can, than what you're paying. So. Make your money work for you.
Makes sense?
Okay. Other questions, did, did that answer your question on that, the building fund?
Yeah.
Proceeds went in, that's what we're gonna pay the building on.
Yeah.
The bond fund will just pay back the principal and the interest on the bonds when they come due. Okay? One thing you have to always, always keep in, in your mind, your budget is for your fiscal year, September one to August first. However, your tax receipts that you get, you're four months in the leg, because September, October, November, December are on the previous year's tax asking. Okay? So not getting all of your tax dollars in within that fiscal year is fairly common. Because you only have eight months from your current year. And the second half of those taxes don't become delinquent till September one, so we don't really get those receipts until next year. I've worked with a lot of young superintendents or new superintendents who just really struggle with that. I didn't get the taxes I requested, because you got eight months, twelve, if you have a tax increase, you're not gonna get half of that increase. So if you're a million dollar increase, you're gonna get five hundred thousand, the second half are coming in the next year. So, makes it, I mean, it's. Questions?
When it's all said and done, the. Tax asking, the levy rate is identical.
That's what we're gonna try to keep. I hope, or the tax asking is, what the levy does could be, if we get a little increase, it could be a little bit less.
Sounds good.
Don't, don't worry about, about your back hurting from somebody patting you on the back, telling you thank you, okay? Just be glad that they're not patting you lower, or kicking you lower. You good?
Yep, I'm good.
Two weeks from tonight, we'll meet back here, I should have a pretty good idea what this budget. Or how it's affected, and then we'll get ready to tell me, put it in the paper.
That's good.
Anything from committee, foundation meeting at all, or?
Yeah, foundation met.
Yeah, we met a week ago Monday, and probably the main thing to highlight would be our annual golf tournament fundraiser, and that would have been. The Saturday prior to that meeting, so just a, just a week ago, and, and Sandy Sekman really does it all, and she really does a great job, and it was. The highest netting event just to date. Netted six thousand five hundred and fifty nine dollars for the foundation, and I guess I would. Highlight that there's numerous alumni, whole, the majority of the money comes from whole sponsorship, and. And the number of alumni whole sponsors, and then a number of business whole sponsors, and included this year. With the new construction, DA Davidson and Clark Anderson and Houseman all were whole sponsors for the golf tournament, so they all stepped up to the plate and donated, and. And it was the best year yet, so it's a success, and Sandy really does it all and does a great job, so. That's probably the main thing to highlight from our meeting. Had a little rain earlier in the morning, but cleared off, nice day, really, really good day for golf.
Did you participate this year?
I, I do. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm playing golf, but I'm on the golf course, and I'm swinging clubs around, and, and hacking up the golf course, so. Good, my annual golf outing.
And they had, they had all the team spills, that was good.
Pardon?
They said they had all the teams that they wanted.
Yes, yeah, I think more participants than in the past, so just a great success.
You bet. Good stuff. Okay. Anything else, comment? No. Recommend or would entertain a motion for adjournment?
During the meeting.
Their second. Who's seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed names? Motion carries.
I'm not sure if I sent you this, but Robert Stevens had a good article in the Lincoln Journal this weekend, and if you haven't read it, it's, it's a good article. Talks about board member wants to quit shaming schools by labels, and I think you did a great job of getting some information in. So if you want, I'll send you the link to it.
Yeah.
Because I think it's a, it's a well-written article, and, and. So, yeah, I'll send that to you.
And the open house tomorrow, and the, and the speed area in the evening, what, what do we expect from that?
He's an awesome speaker, and he, he will talk to our, to our parents about the responsibility, make sure their kids get a good education, it's their meal ticket. You know, there's a lot of ways that you can, you know, you can get it solely by hard work and luck and so on, but. You know, this is your best option, is to get your kids in school, work hard. He, he was himself an immigrant from Haiti, he came from a fairly wealthy family in Haiti, until the guns started firing at him, and then he suddenly had to get out of the country. And they landed in South Florida, and he talks about his struggles when he came here as an immigrant child, and, and having to find his way, you know? And he'll talk to our parents about.
So it'll be the same speaker in the morning?
Same, same speaker in the morning, but he gives different presentations. So he'll talk to teachers about high expectations and holding kids, you know, but holding ourselves to it, and also, but also understanding that these kids come. With a, with a, what they call survival brain, because, you know, they're not ready to sit down and learn. In your classroom right away, they may not have language, and they're just trying to get through the day, they're trying to survive. And so how they navigate their day and how they work, he just makes them aware of all the struggles that these kids go through. Some of the fears that kids have, and some of the fears that our kids have today are the same fears that, that were in his family when they came here, yeah? And then he'll also talk to our kids about, you know, stepping up when you're here, it's time, if, you know? He went down the run roads first before he decided to turn it around, and you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that our kids can pick up from this guy. He found his way into college basketball, and from college basketball into tryouts of the pros, but once that didn't come, work out for him. He had to go back to his education, so he's been teaching in Broward County, and he teaches newcomers in Broward County. And so we're using his program at the high school level now, because we've never had a newcomer program here. We just pretty much put our kids in a YO program, you know, level one, two, and this is the first time that we'll have that level of program here. Trying to get our kids fast track a little bit faster, you know, the whole game is how do you catch them up, especially if they're behind academically, if they're behind age-wise, you know, if they're older as freshmen, how do you speed this thing up and? Make it work? So I think, doesn't matter which session you're hearing, but he does have different messages for different groups. So.
So he'll be back speaking to the students on Wednesday then?
On Wednesday. It's about an hour presentation, when we went to the NABE conference, he, he led, at the national level, he led a bunch of different student groups. I got to watch him work, he does a good job of engaging those kids, and.
Sounds interesting. So twenty sixth, six thirty?
Yep. Let me ask pretty quick.
Maybe.
We're, we are adjourned, right?
We are.